Go ahead and start.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I've been having trouble.
Anyway, uh, welcome. And, uh, wish to address board on a particular, please, uh, let the beginning of the meeting and your request will be honored. And comments on an anyway, we, uh,
let, let us work on that audio. We're hearing ourselves.
Ourselves, right? But delayed.
Yes.
That mean get? That was the
If not, I was getting ready to call it again.
That was the worst branch of stuff.
That's what you sound like, Derek. There we go.
All right. Can those on the YouTube still hear us? You won't be able to respond, but I know Mr. Summers on YouTube. You can give us a text to make sure we're still broadcasting audio. Okay. All right.
So we succeed?
Yes.
Three minute field again, or did that come?
Um, only those who are in the room will be speaking, so that should, that should work.
Okay. Well, we'll go. Okay. With that, we'll
I move that we approve the consent agenda as listed.
Second that motion.
We have a motion to say seeing that we'll proceed.
Aye.
Aye, motion. A, consent.
I move that we approve the consent agenda as listed.
Second that motion.
Have a motion and a discussion. Very now we'll proceed to all of this very important.
Aye.
Aye, motion.
Mr. Chairman, um, we sent the link to Mr. Smith a few minutes before the meeting began, and I do not see him as a participant on the meeting yet. Um, the feedback I'm getting from people is saying that they're having a hard time hearing you. Is your mic turned on?
Yes.
Hmm.
Okay, I'm a but that
Some of us don't need mics and so.
Yeah, it's if it working. Check, check, check. Medium A for meetings. Please. Okay, uh, can you say, uh, Chair?
He is not on the, the meeting yet. So with that, if we could perhaps move to item number five.
We will move to it. And, uh, when he come when he comes on, uh, then we'll allow you to speak and then Andy he'll have his presentation. Is that all right?
Very good.
So with that, we'll, we'll go to agenda item five, Tony Hines, Public Works Manager, needs facility.
Good morning, Tony Hines, please.
Got the experts here now.
See Gary, see Gary, it's all Scott Adams. What's your sign there?
They can't blame it on me.
Not your fault.
One a bit.
This one? Yeah, it's
This is three, no, like three. That was Oh, yeah, like ten.
Oh, I'm like three.
Way I'll be a ten.
Is that one, ten, three? Oh, that makes sense.
Have you guessed the way I'll be a ten?
Number uno right here.
Hello, Tess? Tess, 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 Tess. I suppose they can hear me on the feed. So and when Mr. Smith get, uh, the I mean, well, uh, I have one request. Did item four? Mr. Smith, so lead facilities. Tony, thank you.
Morning, Tony Hines, Facility Manager. Uh, we're looking for the approval on the contract to maintain the, uh, generators and the transfer switches through Empire. This is the annual contract that we've done every
And both of the units are cat equipment, correct?
Uh, no, there's two generators that are ownings.
Oh, okay.
Three veterans.
That's the one here. Okay.
They can exalve those though.
Yes.
And buddy, is there, uh? Yes, sure. That's okay. Yeah. Thank you.
Well, I move that we approve the generator and transfer switch maintenance contract through Empire as presented.
I second that motion.
A motion discussion. See? Ladies indicate by
Aye.
Aye, motion. But now I'll go to a gen.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, a little history would be helpful here. Prior to the pandemic, we had arrangements with, uh, several local providers, charities, and, and one of the diet for this organization that we helped, um, provide some funding to, to keep services with the primary goal of keeping seniors in their own homes. Um, we are fully aware that, that the Altechs program is, is charged to each county based on utilization. And so every senior, senior that we can keep in their home with services there is much less expensive to the county, but it also provides the best, uh, mode and, and method of care for those seniors as well. So we, prior to pandemic, we had funded, uh, things like the senior bus. Um, we helped pay for some of the cost of the driver as well as insurance premiums. Uh, the, the dietary clinic was something where a diet just comes in and provides services primarily to the elderly and, and to diabetics. And then, um, we also have done the Meals on Wheels program. CICUS, uh, would provide meals at senior citizen and senior center in Duncan and Clifton. The one in Duncan is currently closed because they don't have a facility to host the, the meals in, but they are providing meals on wheels to, to residents in Duncan area. During the pandemic, we did not make those donations. Many of these services closed down temporarily. Um, two of the organizations, CICUS and, and, um, uh, Easter Seals as well, all went with the changes. And so whereas every year we would get a, a letter saying, can you help us fund these things? Those letters didn't come. And then we came to come out of the pandemic and try and go back to normal operations. We contacted some of the organizations, found out there'd been some changes. Um, and it's taken us quite a while to sort out who's providing services. Uh, I want to shout out to Laura Garcia in our office. I gave her the task of sorting all this out. She did a fantastic job of running down, um, where, where we give donations in the past, uh, what we budgeted forward and, and between her and me, we were able to get a historical look of what we've done in the past and where those donations have come from and to. The list of provided memo is as near as we can tell, those organizations that are providing services in Green County. The dietary services is actually a contract and we made it happen. And, and the other half is due. So while it's not a traditional donation, it's actually a contract that we have with the diatrist. I want to bring that up in this context because it, it's under that same service umbrella. Easter Seals, um, we understand is running a bus in, in both Duncan and Clifton. And, and before we make any payments, we will confirm that these services are being provided by the organizations listed. If for some reason we've gotten that wrong, we will, uh, either get it to the right organization or we need to come back to the board to make that clear. Uh, but we, we had in the past, uh, budgeted a certain amount for Clifton and a certain amount for Duncan. We're not, I, I'm not certain historically why we invited it that way. It may have been two different organizations providing the service. We understand now that it's, it's the Blake Foundation doing We understand now that it's the Blake Foundation doing the bulk, but we will clarify that. And then, of course, the insurance to help subsidize the cost of the insurance for the buses. CICUS is the Meals on Wheels provider. I visited their new CEO and visited her about what they're providing. And she talked about the difficulties in Duncan area, but that they are providing as many meals as they can by transport. The Greenlee Food Bank was an organization that we had donated to many, many years ago and had not in recent years. But with the, so the changes that have taken place, we have budgeted for it. And so with that, the Greenlee Food Bank actually provides services, they distribute commodities in both the Duncan and Clifton areas, provide an outstanding service. And so since that money was budgeted, although we have not made that donation recently, I wanted to bring this to the board's attention. None of these, of course, are mandatory, but I did have Renee check and all of this money has been budgeted. So this is, we're not going outside our regular budgeting parameters. And with that, I'll answer any questions. My recommendation is that we make the donation as presented.
So I just have a comment. Derek, so this figure here on this on this item reflects what has been donated in the past?
That reflects what we budgeted the current year. That's if you take all the numbers on the memo and add them up, the ninety, ninety-one thousand, sixty-six, I think it is. That is the sum total of all the.
Everything that you just mentioned.
Right.
And is it, is it close to what we've paid out in the past?
It is.
Okay.
It is. Like I say, with the Easter Seals, it was broken into three different donation categories. So that number, that seventy-one thousand looks larger than we've done in the past, whereas before it was forty-two, twenty-one, and I think sixty-five hundred, somewhere in there. But yes, that represents all of the that we've done historically. We did not make them the last two years.
Yeah.
Three years maybe, but that's historically about where we've been.
Okay.
For sure. Yes. I know that we, you know, historically, and I know that we've been asked for other donations to charitable charitable organizations. I know in the past we've sponsored, you know, the Havering that Chase, we sponsor the Colors of Copper, you know, we're being asked to be able to all the San Francisco River thing as well. Is that, do we have a bucket or, you know, under that, you know, same fund, do we have a bucket of not to exceed? Or is that maybe something that we look at to where annually we create that bucket and stay within that?
We have tried each year to establish a bucket, if you will, a budget category for charitable donations. We, other leads that we have made regularly and these are, like I say, tied to a specific purpose of caring for our seniors. But in those, in those cases where, like the Colors of Copper and so forth, we would have a bucket of charitable donations and it was limited. Sometimes I think it was ten thousand dollars in that neighborhood. So I appreciate, for example, San Francisco River, to the folks. When they come and, you know, before the budget year and give us specific asks, that's really helpful because we didn't plan for that. But when, and they do sometimes, requests come in mid-year, we have established a line item for those kinds of donations.
Okay.
And sometimes it's never used and sometimes it's part of it.
Right, right. And, Mr. Chairman, that was the reason that I asked the question in regards to this amount, if it was going to include what Ron just asked. So that doesn't include.
It does not.
No. And is there any funds budgeted for that category?
There is.
Okay.
Yeah. So if we needed to, you know, let's say someone comes to the next, next meeting and says, if you donate five hundred dollars to this good cause and the board decides that it's there, we would have the money to fund that request.
Okay.
And in our next, you know, one of those things we've covered in our discussions, how big of a pot you want.
Right, that's good.
We sort of leave that static, but as things increase, we may want to pump that up a little bit.
Well, we all have, we all have budgets and so that's why I thought, you know, it'd be good to kind of come up with that.
Yes.
That, that amount annually or something.
And the world of charitable needs doesn't always match our fiscal year.
Yeah, yeah.
And so we try to build something in, but this is stuff that we had specifically budgeted for these purposes, aside from any other charitable nation board may have chosen to make.
Sounds good.
Understood.
But with that, I move that we approve the donations to charitable charitable and professional organizations as budgeted not to exceed ninety-one thousand, two hundred and ninety-six in total donations as presented.
I second that motion.
Any further discussion? Seeing now.
I.
I am voting. Agenda item seven, Derek repair, county and state budget necessary issues.
Thank you. The only message to the state that seems consistent is that the news doesn't change very much down there. I have read and talked to folks, I imagine our chairman is even more in tune than I am, that there is still budget talks going on, that they see the fairly low level. Right now, things are stalled for a second week because the American County Board of Advisors has not appointed anybody to fill the vacancy caused by the expulsion of Representative Paris. There is no statutory requirement on when they have to make that appointment. There is a statutory timeline for the precinct committee people to nominate and they've met that deadline, but there's no deadline to appoint. Without, without her appointment, there is no clear majority in the House. And there's only been minimal interest in reaching across the aisle to solve budget issues. What we're being told, each member has been given an allotted amount of money to designate where they like to go. Most are choosing road projects, otherwise we're trying to get interested all along. But with those designations, the Republicans are saying they've got their half of it worked out. They gave a certain amount of money to the Democrats and said, you've sort of, you won't spend it. And at least the rhetoric in print right now is that that process is broken down somewhat. If there's anything we've learned over the last many, many years is that there may be lots of things going on in the budget discussions and there's lots of things said in the media. And it's hard to connect the two sometimes. From our perspective, we have met with all of the departments and electeds and we are currently in the process right now of assembling those individual budgets. That's why I don't have a budget work session today. But we will be making, to myself, Austin, Renee, we'll be making a lot of headway in the next two, three weeks and so we can present you a preliminary outline of what the budget looks like. We received revenue numbers from the state on our vehicle licensing tax, tilt estimates, our shared sales tax revenue estimates and one other escapes me, the DLT, all of them except the shared sales tax revenue are coming in and out, normal expected. Shared sales tax revenue projection is down by almost a million this year. We have never relied on DOR's estimates or our own estimates. They usually overshoot, but they've been known to undershoot as well. Some of their estimates are based on the Fiscal Advisory Council as well as other economic forecasters, the GLBC in the governor's office, all of whom are predicting an economic slowdown at the end of the year. That horizon seems to continue to creep out, whereas twelve months earlier, they thought we'd be in recession now. Now we're looking at perhaps the end of 2023. I think those shared sales tax revenues reflect that pessimistic view of the next twelve month period. Our own shared sales tax revenue over the last probably four or five months has leveled and dropped a little bit. Our local excise tax or half set sales tax has likewise dropped a little bit. Some of that is predictable due to the adjustments to the taxation on electricity for our local sales tax. On the shared sales tax revenue side, we're still up, but over the last nine months, year over year, we are at or below last year's level and I think seven of the nine months. And so, so we are seeing some slow. Now, having said that, last year was an unusually prosperous, one might say, sales tax year. I don't believe to this point that it's going to require us to change our overall operations, but it's something we watch every month. And, and of course, we have a reserve set up in our budget, which is currently set at four point five million, that if those revenues continually drop for three months in a row, at that point, we bring back the board and begin to review our spending. If it continues, then we freeze hiring, we do some other things to, to conserve what resources we have to get through the year. I don't see that alarm bell sounding yet, but we will watch it month to month. We will, however, project a lower shared sales tax revenue issue than we did last year for our budget purposes. We should have a fairly decent cash carry forward that'll make up for that. That cash carry forward, of course, is a year to year at the event. And then on the property tax side, our assessed value is down, which means the tax rate to maintain the same revenue will go up a little bit. It stays in a fairly narrow bandwidth, but our assessed value, primarily centrally assessed, has gone down this year. So this board probably more than most, because of our unique tax circumstance, is aware of the inverse relationship between property values and property tax rates. But those are the building blocks that we're working with right now. Other than that, there are a few real surprises. And so I'll take any questions on the budget.
I don't have any.
No, pretty clear.
With that, while we work on getting Mr. Smith in the meeting, I'm going to cover the calendar. Today we're first meeting day on the second. Chairman, do you continue having LPC or is that suspended while they're on spring break?
They, they suspended it last and I haven't heard, but I haven't heard, so I imagine it's suspended again. If there's nothing, there's nothing to discuss if no one's meeting, so.
Right. And I believe that other than a couple of bills down again, there's, most of them are going to be tied to the budget. They won't really hear those until, until they get serious about a budget. We have, of course, on the twelfth, our county managers meeting. There will also be a ASIP board meeting that day. We've been trying to meet pretty much the same time as county managers for our insurance pool. We have the WIR regional conference, which will be held in St. George, right across New York, Utah.
Yes.
This year on the seventeenth through the nineteenth. There's a CECO meeting, there's one tomorrow for the administrative council. I will not be able to attend it. I've talked Randy Heiss about that. For the board's information, I am a ten year serving of administrative council leadership and I consent to go ahead. I will be the vice chair next year of the administrative council. I believe our chairman is your chairman.
Currently, currently, yeah.
So there's a CECO meeting, I believe it's the executive council. I jumped out at nine thirty. It's nine o'clock.
Ten o'clock.
Ten o'clock.
In Graham County.
In Graham, that'll be hoping.
Actually, we have a meeting at three o'clock the day before because we're kind of shuffling through all the resumes and applications for replacement of Randy Heiss, who's going to retire this year.
Good, very good. Junior rodeo series continues on the twentieth. And then we have our second board meeting the month on the twenty-third. That following day, we have small counties and the CECO meeting. I know they're split at two and five for five thirty. CSA board directors on the twenty-fifth and of course we have Duncan and Brentwood eight grade promotion. Following night is graduation for both Brentwood and Duncan and then we'll be closed for Memorial Day on the twenty ninth. We are currently scheduled that meeting on the thirty-first. If we cover enough ground on the twenty-third, we may skip the thirty-first, but we will, we'll see. Our goals will be as much done as we can on that next regular working. Into June, we have meetings on the sixth and on the twentieth. We have an extra budget meetings on the fourteenth and the twenty-eighth. On the twentieth, we have to adopt tentative budget. If that, if we meet that deadline, then the one on the twentieth will go. If we don't, then we will adopt on the twentieth. That's really the last day we've been still meeting all of our public meetings. Yeah, with the board meetings, chairman, I.
Yeah, yes, they're, they're.
They're regular?
Regular, very regular.
Do you want these on that calendar?
That's.
Okay.
It's whatever.
We get with us afterwards, we place them all on the calendar.
Okay.
The chair works best for you.
You're doing a good job. They're both correct.
Okay. In June, we'll have a county manager meeting on the ninth. And typically don't have CSA meetings. Moving into July, the month will be closed on the fourth. We'll have a regular scheduled board meeting on the fifth and we'll adopt the final budget on the twentieth. Let's see, we have junior rodeos on the fifteenth and the twenty-ninth. And I forgot the one on the twenty-fourth of June. There will likely be a county manager's meeting in July and in August, there won't be CSA in July, but if you start back up in August, certainly you'll be the vice of chairman.
Only September is when the CSA.
When does school start in July?
I don't.
Okay.
I'll find out. Usually around the twenty-fifth or something.
And we can certainly add, add those schools starting, you know, that will start in July from Brentwood in August.
Duncan.
And I think that takes us through July. And we'll be happy to add anything you'd like us to add.
We have on the nineteenth of July.
July.
She has it already for the others.
Okay. Very good.
Anything to add or?
Nope.
Okay, do we have Mr. Smith or?
He is on the telephone. I have got a PowerPoint. He was not able to join the team's meeting, you know, if I had been here.
Why don't we? Why don't we listen?
Would you like to present there or would you like to put this off to another meeting?
Well, I can get a screen where it says sign in. And it says contact to, if you have signed in and then you. But there's no screen to sign in. There's no place to sign in. So I'm kind of stuck on this Microsoft Teams. So if you would like, I think I can go ahead and give you the update on the years on that.
I do. Would you like me to pull up your slide presentation and have you walk us through it? Is that okay for chairman?
Yes, but. But we.
Mr. Smith?
Mr. Smith. Request to speak on it. So with that, give the floor over.
It's interesting and maybe is, we'll go along with one of the things I wanted to say too. I did work with the forest service for several summers. One of the things I did was some of the trail where mostly our state care can grounds, but I want to try to make sure she can find the head. The trail, every trail that was in there, it's not always, not always easy. It took a little. Been on duty. One of the things that we can pass is in the county, there was a segment that was called Randy Champ and Trail, goes from Phoenix to Albuquerque. So I was working with her to try to make sure that it found on the route that's there. I did run across somebody who was, I can be at one point. I don't know how last trail is. Overall, it looked kind of interesting, but I tried to get signed in because. Last thing I wanted to mention, that one thing I heard, this was a forest service folks, was the advent of the GPS, all this technology. It's basically where people are less likely to get lost and I'm asking you as well. as they count upon GPS, get them through things that we all know that there are places out there where we don't have that access. I just wanted to say, whatever kind of professional you need to to Greenie County.
Mr. Smith, if you. I've got your slide up, your introductory slide up, and if you'd like, if you'd tell me when you'd like me to advance to the next slide.
State March. Arizona State Flexing, only give grants to designated trails that are 501(c)(3) organizations, and that's what we are. So the Arizona Alpine Trail is a big deal for the state. It's due only in one place, but it's really important. It's a. Um, if it was. Uh. So.
Second slide. Episode six.
So we're back. Do you want to say business? Okay. So. Just to take. County Hall. Did he stop over there? Uh. You have a trail, maybe five or six. About this. So. I'm the president, and we have several. We have several. So, um.
If there's any anything that.
I had a, I had a question, sir. This is Senator Campbell. Sorry, I forgot to take that. Like, can you feel okay right now? Um. Can we anticipate this? Yeah, it does, and and just wanted to extend my, you know, appreciation and and offer to to assist when when it does get rolled out and you are going to you know, get it in the area of Henning and Meadow and and we start to see, you know, people using that. I'll definitely be in discussions with with the owners of Henning and Meadow and and let them know about the, you know, request for available fuel, et cetera, so. I look forward to hearing more about it.
Yeah, I appreciate that supervisor. Larry, so, so he's he's been very responsive. So, yeah, this sounds great to him. We have, we have, by the way, one of the things that has happened
I mentioned the Peace Trail in western Arizona. And the developer of that trail is a good friend now. We've we've been, and he's helped us a lot on this one. He said that a lot of the small towns on his trail, um, let's say they 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 had 20 motel rooms in some of these small places. Once the trail was established and people really started using it, they had to build more. They had to build another 50% more rooms just to accommodate the riders on the trail because this is something that there's a lot of people in the valley in Phoenix and Tucson that would love to come up and ride in our mountains, and they just don't know where to go. And this trail gives them an opportunity to do that, and it's organized, and it lets them figure out exactly where they want to stay overnight and how many miles they want to travel a day, which, by the way, is usually about, I mean, an average maybe of 60 miles in a day. Um, on an OHV, you travel about ten miles an hour, uh, average. Um, so there's, so that'd be a six-hour day. Some of them are longer, some of those stretches are, are longer than that. But, um, at any rate, um, people are not going to go over a hundred miles a day. So they are going to stop and, um, hopefully, uh, they'll spend, spend a lot of money, uh, when they're stopping. That's, that's the idea is to really boost the economy of rural Arizona with this trail. Okay.
Sounds good.
Sounds good. Thank you, uh, Mr. Smith, and thank you. I, I just, I guess, uh, this trail will be open seasonally. And, uh, who will be in charge of when there's extreme snow in the area? Who will be in charge of making sure that, uh, OHV, uh, don't get out there and get stranded in six-foot snowdrifts?
Good question. Uh, we have, uh, by the way, we do have some, uh, organizations of snowmobilers that want to use the trail in the winter. Uh, and they said they, they would keep the trail open for us. Um, and we also, we partner with people like the, um, uh, the Pine Top Area, the White Mountain Open Trails Association in Payson, the, the Trail Organization, TRAL. Ruth Smith runs that, uh, in, uh, in your area. The Apache County ATV Club is a partner. And, um, so we draw from, from those people for maintenance and, uh, uh, letting us know if a certain trail is closed. You're right, this is a seasonal trail for OHVers. It's not going to be open, um, in the winter. Uh, it's, we're, we're looking at a, a season, uh, from probably April to October. Um, dur- during certain years, uh, we can ride it all year. You, you and I both know that there are winters where we just don't get any snow. And that's not good, uh, for the trees and for the skiers and everything else, but it would leave the trail open. So we'll, we'll monitor that and, and we'll close portions of the trail, uh, as deemed necessary, uh, for that.
David, you have. Well, thank you so much for your presentation. Uh, it, it sounds exciting. It, uh, and there's a lot of OHV riders out there. We just love a trail like this. Uh, it's, I, I know I've ridden some of them around Springerville that they have the little, and, uh, some of those trails are phenomenal. And, uh, to have a, uh, six to seven hundred mile trail that is a loop is, is, uh, I think it will, uh, as the word gets out, it will become more and more used because that is an exceptional trail. And, uh, thank you for your vision.
Okay, well, I appreciate your time and, uh, and, um, Derek, if it's appropriate, I will send you a request for, uh, support of the trail, um, and, uh, request for funding.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Have a wonderful day.
Okay, thank you supervisors. Uh, you all have a great day yourselves.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Bye.
It's not working, so. We will now go to agenda item eight. Uh, consent agenda.
So move that we approve the consent agenda as posted. I'll second that.
David, our motion to second, is there any discussion on any of the items? Seeing now we'll proceed to vote. All those in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye. Aye, motion passes. Thank you. We'll go to agenda item nine, supervisor reports. Mr. Campbell, I don't have anything to say. Okay, well, Derek alluded to, to what's happening over legislature. Um, yes, there are some, uh, wait and see, but, um, with, with, with trying to replace Liz Harris, as you know, to get a budget out, you need, uh, thirty-one and sixteen and one. And, uh, so right now they're, they're in stall move because no one can, uh, get anything done. Uh, you've probably heard, there's been a lot on the news about the tamale bill where for, uh, it was a bill that passed both chambers, uh, with, with more than enough, uh, votes to, oh, to, uh, override a veto. Well, so, uh, the leadership decided that they would, because the, uh, Governor Hobbs did veto the bill for, uh, food safety. And, uh, so the legislators thought they would, uh, veto with override or veto, which they need two, two-thirds votes in both chambers. And, um, when it went through chambers, it, it, uh, had a major majority. Well, when they tried to, to override the governor's veto, it failed. Um, so that's probably the biggest thing that's been happening over there. Also, uh, as you know, we, and I'll now go to WIR, which is happening at the end. Well, towards the middle of this month. Uh, it's in St. George, Utah. There's three commissioners or supervisors that are trying for the second vice president. And we heard from them yesterday on a, a call. Uh, all three of them are, I, I thought did an outstanding job. Uh, and, uh, that election will happen at, at our meeting. Also, uh, small counties, uh, we hosted and, uh, we tried to. Senator Gowen, uh, was there and, and gave us an update. And then we had a, a presentation, uh, on, uh, Greenie County budgeting issues in statewide importance. And Derek did an outstanding job on, on his presentation. There were many, many questions and, but, uh, kudos go to Derek for doing an outstanding, taking a very complex issue and making it, um, where we could understand it. Also appreciate Bianca, she was over there helping and, and, and didn't have to worry about a thing. Uh, other than that, we had a junior rodeo. The numbers were down some. I think we had sixty-three participants. Uh, but, uh, there was also some competing, uh, factors. So I think our numbers will go up. But I have to give kudos to, uh, to Tony Hind. He, uh, he got us some, some new, uh, chairs for, for up there in the crow's nest, I call it. And, uh, got a lot of praise. They were really nice, uh, chairs. And then also they'd ask for walkie-talkies. Uh, he had them there. They were used throughout the night. So Tony, I want to publicly thank you for what you and your staff do and, and for the support that you give, the many, many activities, uh, that occurred throughout the county. And with that, that's my report. There being no other business on the agenda, this board meeting is adjourned.
Thank you.